Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you for coming. The first item on the agenda tonight is student reports. Do we have any student reports?
Yes, we do.
Come to the mic, please.
Hello and good evening. My name is Alicia Fagarsky and I am a sophomore at Proudey. Over the next couple of weeks, Proudey will be holding a winter carnival. This is a chance for everyone in the school to get in on the fun. All different kinds of events will be held. Everything from a chess tournament to a movie night. Tomorrow, in honor of Teacher Appreciation Day, the students are requested to dress up like their favorite teacher. Thank you to all the teachers in the district. To end the two weeks, on January 17th at 7:00, we'll be holding a snowball semi. On the darker side of my report, finals are coming up. They are held on the 15th and the 17th, the 16th. Tomorrow night at 7:00, there will be a student versus faculty basketball game. A mission is $2. On January 8th, there will be an orientation for current eighth graders and their parents. All are welcome. On December 22nd, the Secretary of Education, Mr. Matt Malone, paid a visit to Proudey. Mr. Matt Malone went in some of the classrooms to get a feel for how the students felt about their education. Okay. And now our seniors' acceptance letters for college are coming in really quickly. Anna Bogdan was accepted to Fordham University, Emmanuel College, and George Mason University. Jackie Diutis was accepted to Becker College. Jamie Fontaine was accepted to Westfield State. Casey LaCare was accepted to Anna Maria. Terry Lidle was accepted to WPI and UMass Amherst. Jackson Paul was accepted to Tulane University. Alec Patruzy to Nichols College. And Emily Wright to Westfield State, UMass Dartmouth, and Bridgewater State. And finally, the marketing ed one honors class recently studied how positive community involvement can help to promote business and individuals. In conjunction with this topic, students conducted the third annual mitten drive to collect donations for the Worcester Telegram and Gazette Santa Fund. Donations to this fund helps buy toys for children in need in Central Mass. For each donation of $1 or more, students signed a paper mitten to be placed in the window of the cafeteria. Thanks to the generosity of the students and staff of Proudey, we were able to send $250, $215 to the Santa Fund. Students involved collecting donations during homeroom and lunches for Connie Morgan, Sean Cody, Maggie Paul, Allison Shigrin, Jeremy White, Zachary Boudano, and Nick Haropwis. The mitten meter shows the products of donations was designed by Savannah Mattie. Many thanks to all the students and staff of Proudey. Thank you.
Thank you. Good job. Are there any other student reports?
No.
No? Okay, thank you. Our next item, hearing for visitors. Anyone wish to be heard? Okay, seeing none, moving on. Approval of the minutes of December 16th, you have those in your packet unless there's any corrections or deletions. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Angela, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chair.
Seconded by Kurt. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. Next item is superintendent's report. Dr. Crowe.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I've now been in the district for over a month, and while much of the work has been revolving around operational demands, specifically operational demands, time has been spent in reviewing and analyzing documents, district reports, participating in negotiations, budget preparation, and then meeting with various stakeholders. To date, I've met and communicated with school committee members and two former superintendents, the executive director of the Mass Association of Regional Schools, the financial overseer for the district, and the Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed Personnel, District and School Assistance Center Team, the police chief, town administration, cable TV, parents and teachers, central and building level administrators, the part-time business manager Julie Suprenant, and district treasurer and business staff, not to mention the custodial staff and the food services director. A major focus has been on finding a new business administrator for the district during this time and has involved multiple postings review and screening of the applicants with interviews of candidates by committee during the months of both November and December. So it's been a busy time. Always, it's true, coming into a district in the middle of a year, it's very different than coming in on July 1st. So things are in motion and the parts are moving pretty quickly. So the budget is going to be a big part of what's happening in the coming months. There's much work to be done on this because we're entering the budget season and we're actually in it right now. I've met with administrators to review the data-informed needs in their individual buildings, and we as a group are now in the process of collaborating on a district budget proposal. As soon as we secure the new business administrator, the budget process will be in full swing and the budget will certainly become a focus of all the administration's work in the months to come until it's approved. As you already heard under news and events, I will tell you that we were very excited to host Secretary Malone in the district, and I'm really pleased to inform you that he was very impressed with a number of things he saw. He was very impressed with the students with whom he spoke. He visited specifically at David Proudey, and then he also went to East Brookfield Elementary. He, at the high school, he visited three very specific classes. One of them, he said he had never seen in any school that he had visited during his tenure, and that was the guitar class. He also visited the mass media communication class and then forensics. He did engage the students in conversations about their studies right now, about the technology in the district, and also about their future plans. When he visited the elementary school in East Brookfield, the students were at an assembly receiving awards, and he addressed them and their teachers, and he was very impressed with their enthusiasm. We also, as you know, had the annual police-sponsored Christmas party on December 22nd where our youngest students were treated to a magician, music, and gifts. And this is a great example of the collaborative efforts of a community that can build community and also make a huge difference in the lives of our students. I want to notify people that we're going to be receiving at the elementary schools for grade three, a book donation by an author named Nyla Webster. She has graciously donated a book to every one of the students in each of the third-grade classes, and they'll be receiving the book called Remember Beauty and Songs for a Blue Time. This has been honored for its illustrations by the Society of Illustrators, and it's a story of an unusual yet forever friendship between a wolf and a kitten. Principals Stanlin and Tomlin are coordinating a joint assembly for later this month possibly so that students and their teachers can view the video that Nyla Webster has sent for them and also read them the message about her book and then distribute the books at that time. Lastly, I just want to say that I'm full of gratitude for the warm welcome that I've received from so many people in the community, and I wanted to let you know that I will be, I do expect to host an open house here at the next school committee meeting on the 20th before the meeting begins, and I hope that people will come. It's going to be an opportunity for parents, the students, and the community members to come and share their ideas and then ask any questions that they have. I do want to thank specifically Secretary Malone for visiting us. I was very grateful that he came. I do want to thank the Police Association for hosting the event, but also the entire community for supporting it, and then of course, Nyla for her book donation. But I'm very grateful to the community for their patience. As I said, coming in in the middle of the year, it's been a busy time, and I still have many people to meet and many events to attend. So I hope you'll bear with me, but I do want to thank everyone for sharing their talents. I want to thank the parents that have come and volunteered. I've met with many parents that have offered their talents and expertise to do various things for the district, and thank you particularly to the senior members of our community that also volunteer for our students. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Crowe. Does anyone have any questions for the superintendent in regards to her report? Okay, moving on. Next item, financial report, expenditure report. Members were given information from Julie Suprenant in regards to the expenditure report. There are some transfers that have to be voted. Chair would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, a motion to approve the transfers as submitted.
Motion by Mr. Cludy, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Angela. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. Unfinished business, first item, business administrator search update. I've informed all the members of the board. The superintendent informed me that she has appointed Mr. Gary Suter as the comptroller for the district. We have entered into negotiations. The board has reviewed and cast a vote and had an executive session. The order of business at this point would be for motions to be made and approved in open session. The chair would entertain a motion to ratify the comptroller's contract.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Nodkows.
I'm going to make a motion to ratify the employment agreement between the Spence East Brookfield Region School District and Gary Suter for a period from January 12, 2015 to June 30, 2017 as comptroller.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Angela. Any further discussion? All those in favor on a roll call vote. Heather?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Vinnie?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Angela?
Aye.
Kurt?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Dr. Crowe, would you care to introduce Mr. Suter?
This time, I'd like to introduce Mr. Gary Suter, comptroller for the district.
I just want to take an opportunity to thank Dr. Crowe for her confidence in me and giving me the opportunity to serve the district, and I appreciate the support that the committee has extended me by giving me this contract, and I'm looking forward to digging into the budget, so, thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Okay, moving on. Next order of business, revolving student accounts. This was tabled until the next meeting. The treasurer does have the information available. Just got finished today. I think it's best to leave it tabled until we can get copies out to all of the members and stuff, and I'll ask her to make a presentation at the next meeting. Next item is coordinated program review report. Dr. Crowe?
Dr. Zaleski is going to review the coordinated program review report.
Are we going to do a presentation? We'll take a seat if members will move down to the front.
reviewers looked at these various components. So just to give you a little history on the review, the review, prior to the review, you have to upload documents a year prior. So with our review, it was a little interesting. We had uploaded the documents two years prior because we were up for review, and at the time, the current superintendent had asked the state to give us a delay in the review. So the documents that were uploaded were not all updated. So a year later, the reviewers were proceeding to set dates to come out, and we had requested as a district to upload most recent documents. So the majority of those documents got uploaded successfully. A couple we caught with the state and said, no, that information wasn't accurate, and they worked back and forth with us to correct some of those areas. And then the next step in the process after you upload the documents is they review the documents and then they set dates to come out, they do a record review, and then they meet with various stakeholders across the district. So that actual meeting with the various stakeholders across the district took place on the dates that you see, the week of April 14th to the 18th, looking at these various components. So the, I pulled all this information, just for folks to be aware, directly from the report, which is posted publicly on our website, and those results have been available since the report came out to parents, families, members of the school community, and in the community at large. So there are three different components that they looked at. They looked at special education, civil rights, and ELE. And so in special education, out of the 60 areas, 41 were met successfully, 19 areas were partially implemented, and there were none that were not implemented at all. In civil rights and other gen-ed requirements, out of 27, 12 areas were partially implemented and none were not implemented at all. And in ELE, out of the 18 areas, 7 need corrective action, and two of the areas at the bottom, you can see, area 14 and 17, which I'll review, were not implemented at all. So just to give a brief snippet, and I'll try to keep this as brief as possible, this was very multi-layered, and I tried to condense it to get every component in. But out of these areas, SE stands for special ed, 2, 3A, 6, 8, and 9, these are the things that need to be corrected in the department that are partially, considered partially implemented. So areas of suspected disability weren't always included on consent forms for reevals that we do. History of students' educational progress in the general curriculum were not consistently completed by the principal team when determining special ed eligibility. The autism spectrum, which is a new checklist that came out, was needed at team meetings, and they saw evidence that it wasn't always present. The transition planning form for students age 14 and up was not fully updated. Gen ed teachers were not always coming to the meetings. The district did not always implement excusal process. So for instance, if a parent or somebody, a member of the team couldn't make it, we didn't always have the excusal form checked off properly. And the IEP teams' meetings were not always held within the 45 school days after receipt of the parent consent for evaluation. In these areas, there's a non-participation justification form that didn't state why removal was critical to the student's program. So for instance, if a student was being placed in a sub-separate program, well, speech, OTPT, there's a section in the IEP where you have to justify why that removal is there, and that wasn't always fully complete. We didn't have an IEP in effect for each eligible student within its jurisdiction at the time. At Lake Street and East Brookfield Elementary, IEPs with speech and language were not fully implemented due to staff shortages. So just to give you the history on that, a couple of years prior to my coming on, it's my understanding that a speech pathologist was not replaced who had resigned from the district, and that resulted in the staff shortage because that person never was replaced. The N1 notice wasn't always, didn't always include rejected options and other relevant factors, which is a paragraph that we send out to parents after we do an IEP meeting. And the district doesn't have a behavioral program to meet the needs of elementary students and behavior is interfering with the learning at the elementary level. In these areas, at the time of the review, they came out when we didn't have the computers down, so a lot of these areas were cited due to not having access to computers, as you can see the first two areas, because we didn't have access to the technology. Students with the IEPs, their needs were not getting met across the district, and we didn't have individual oversight of provision to services for students in out-of-district placement, and part of that related directly to technology as well. And again, they're citing that we don't have sufficient resources to support elementary students with behavioral needs that impact their learning. Just to give you the history on the behavioral program, and this goes back to the presentations I've done to the board in the past about needing a social-emotional program across the district, which was cut in 2012. Oops, excuse me. The district doesn't always have sufficient, they're stating again, they mentioned it a couple of times with the speech and language needs, does not have sufficient resources to support behavioral needs again, and review of documents indicate that one special education teacher did not have current licensure. So like I said, documents were uploaded a couple of years prior. So when I saw this, I submitted evidence to them that that person was no longer employed in the district, and that was rectified. We don't need corrective action in that area. Moving on to civil rights. So I put a lot of categories at the top, but if you see, I only cited three categories because all the remaining categories at the top have a common theme, and the common theme was gender identity as a protected category. So through a lot of our documents, we don't have that statement. We talk about, you know, having civil rights protections for other classes, but we did not speak of gender identity, so that has to be corrected in the district. With CR 7, we don't have an established system of oral interpretation to assist parents with limited English skills, including those who speak low incident language. The code of conduct does not reference the law which pertains to students, this law which pertains to students who reside in the district have certain rights pertaining to them, so that needs to be amended, along with Section 504 plans needs to be amended and the code of conduct as well. And CR 16 applies to a law that's out that we need to send annual written notice for two years to students basically who have dropped out, that we have other options for them through GED or other programming. With English language learner components, so the five categories at the top were partially implemented and two were not implemented at all. So consent, it says consent not required for the ELE program, but essentially, we were requiring consent, and they said you don't need to have consent, so you need to stop doing that. So that's one area. The district doesn't provide direct ESL instruction. Service is limited to a sheltered immersion program. So basically, English language learner students that are in our district are receiving instruction within the inclusion of regular classroom setting, but under the WIDA standards, which is their curriculum. However, we're not providing directed ESL instruction, which is an area we need to correct. And when you see that it says the SEI program in the district is inconsistent with department guidelines, it's because we're not providing the directed instruction. The policy and procedure manual doesn't have, does not have a description for declining entry to a program, and students do not receive the amount of English as a second language support. The two areas that we are not implementing really pertain to not having an ESL licensed teacher in the district. So that is a definite problem, which you will see come up in my budget presentation because we don't have a licensed person. And because we don't have a licensed person, it is impacting these other ELE areas because we can't meet department guidelines and provide instruction that the students need without having that ELE certified person because we're all doing it, but we're not doing it the way we need to with that certified instructor. So I figure we should focus on what's working well, because we did have several corrective action areas that we were cited unpositively for, and I always believe in ending on a positive note. So what's working well in special ed, and this comes directly again from the report, all of our assessments are appropriately selected and interpreted. Special requirements for determination of learning disabilities is there. We report out on our assessment results. We participate in state and district-wide assessments, MCAS, things like that. Transfer parents' rights at age of majority and student participation at the consent of age of majority is being done. We're doing our end-of-school year evaluations. We're responding to parental requests for independent evals. Progress reports and content to parents is intact. We have enough outreach evidenced in the documents they looked at by the school district. We do our kindergarten screening with complete integrity and fidelity. We're initiating services at the age of three for early intervention. We're doing extended evaluations. We're meeting our school day and school year requirements for students with special needs. Again, parental consent. We're sending copies of notices for the special ed appeals when we have those situations. We're resolving disputes appropriately. We have adequate parent participation in meetings. The team meeting notice to parents are going out. We have a parent advisory council intact for special ed. We have involvement in the general curriculum for students with special needs. Special ed services in institutional settings is available. We have procedures to provide services to students enrolled in private schools. Instructional grouping requirements for students age 5 and older is being met appropriately. We're meeting all the age span requirements, and we use waivers where appropriate. Programs for young children, 3 and 4 years of age are intact. We have procedures for recording suspensions, and we have procedures for suspensions up to 10 days and after 10 days because there's regulations around that for special needs students. We have requirements applied to students not yet determined eligible for sped. We have equal opportunities for the students. They cited me as meeting my responsibilities in the department. We have appropriate certifications and licenses or other credentials related service providers. We have everything that we need in that area. We are appropriately using our paraprofessionals. We are providing enough professional development. We are making use of the sped facilities, and the programs and services are evaluated consistently. What's working well in civil rights? School district employment practices. They looked across the district and said what we need as a district. We have enough in-school programming for students that are pregnant, school year schedules, structured learning time. We have appropriate early release procedures for high school students. We have anti-hazing and bullying reports, designation of coordinators and grievance procedures. Information on academic counseling is intact. We use physical restraint appropriately, and we're meeting all the guidelines with training. Responsibilities of the school principals are being met. Staff training on confidentiality of student records is being met. Accessibility of district programs for students is available. We have enough comparability with facilities, and it's equitable, and we're maintaining confidentiality of the student records. What's working well in ELE? Assessment of student progress is intact. We have waiver procedures. We have program exit and readiness, parent involvement and notification, equal access to non-academic and extracurricular programs. We have follow-up support. We're meeting the professional development requirements. We have equitable facilities and records of the LEP students. So here are the next steps. We've been directed, so once we receive a report like this, the reviewers send out a directive as to what we need to do to correct the action areas, and so this summarizes really is the cap, overarching cap of what I need to do to address the areas. Allocation and addition of resources for the various things they say we don't have, like social-emotional programming, ELE, the speech and language. So I'm trying to look at an organizational structure with Dr. Crowe as to how I can remedy that in the most cost-effective manner and in a manner that's going to address the students' needs appropriately. Enhancing and developing various procedures across the district because most of these areas require procedures to be written. Professional development to enhance some of the SE procedures, so mainly because they did cite us for being good in the area of professional development, but what I mean by that is professional development to the team chairs in terms of meeting timelines and things that pertain directly to procedures, not the overarching professional development that we do as a district because we are doing that well. Revising documents, we have, again, that applies to the gender identity and things that are missing in some of the documents that we're using, including IEP documents. We've never conducted an ELE annual review in the district, so they're ordering us to do that this year, and I am hiring a consultant out of one of my grants to take care of that. And then progress reporting to DESC. So as of, that's the end of my presentation, but as of February 26th, I have to report out on all of those areas and write procedures. So I'm working diligently. I've got a consultant working with me to help me with that. It is very cumbersome. I'll be calling in the building principals and members of my team to assist with writing procedures. Essentially, we need a procedure manual. That's pretty much what I've concluded, and so I did outreach a consultant to say, look, you know, instead of reinventing the wheel, what are other districts doing? What have they done well? You know, what's the structure of it so that the next time we come around for a review, I don't have this problem where we don't have procedures? Because I think if we had a procedure manual in place that I could have handed to the reviewers, it would have made life easier for a lot of people when they were doing the document review. But what happened is they came in, and they were reviewing documents, and they were reviewing our files, and when they were asking about procedures, we were able to cite some of the procedures, but we had no evidence. So that's not good enough, and we need to be better. So that's the next steps, and I welcome any questions that you may have. Sure. You can log me out. Thank you.
Do any of the board members have any questions in regards to what Dr. Zaleski, Heather?
How often are special ed files reviewed internally within the district?
Internally within the district? It's on an ongoing basis, so we don't have a procedure, which is a corrective action area, so we need to have a procedure in place, which I'm actually working on right now, because truth be told, it's random.
Okay.
It's typically more reactive than proactive, and that's something that we need to work on. So for instance, if a case comes up and a team chair or psychologist brings a situation to my attention, and they say we have the situation brewing and we need you to, you know, help XYZ app to pull up the record, and that's when we start reviewing and troubleshooting. It really needs to not be that way. There needs to be a procedure where there's like a random internal audit that takes place, and we go through the records, and then I'm able to say, well, wait a minute, we had training on this procedure, and this isn't being followed, and how come this wasn't written in that manner, and strategize it that way. So to date, we haven't had a procedure. It's been random.
It seems like many of the things we're cited for were paperwork-related that could be easily remedied.
Absolutely.
The internal.
Internal oversight is definitely the dilemma, and as I said, I think a procedure manual will help because what my plan is, is to, well, not even my plan, I've been directed to write the procedures, but then my plan is to not just do it to be compliant because I think being compliant in education can get you in trouble. We can, I can be compliant. I can write procedures till the cows come home. I wrote a dissertation, and I can submit it, and I can get it off my plate and consider the job done, but that's not good enough. What I need to do is write the procedures, train the staff, which is my plan, and then once I have the staff trained on what the procedures are, then the accountability piece comes in where I have an internal audit based on my procedures that are written. And so then if it's not being followed, we can have the discussion about what needs to happen next and why it's not being followed. Some of it, too, involves a reorganization within my department, and I've talked to my team about this. And I've talked to my team about this, the caseloads are heavy. The psychologist's caseloads are heavy, we do have staff shortages and the reviewers saw that. And I'm trying to come up with a way to strategize with my staff, how they can meet the procedures and the timelines and the deadlines and how I can oversee that effectively with the loads that they're carrying. So, I think you're right on, Heather, in terms of the procedures would correct a lot of that. And it would have corrected it if we had a manual in place when the reviewers came out. Because I could have said, here it is, instead of just kind of verbally relaying it. And everybody had a different understanding. You know, when the reviewers came out and they talked to different people across the district. They talked to parents, they talked to parent advisory council members, they talked to board members, they talked to all educators. Everybody had a different lens, which is why we got these results. So, that tells me that people don't have a clear understanding procedurally what's happening in this district and that's not okay.
Needs to be consistency across the district.
Absolutely.
Anything else, Heather? Anyone else have any questions?
Chairman.
Mr. Nodkis.
That was a good report, Karen.
Thank you.
I see you got your work cut out for you, so I'm sure you can do it just by listening to what you just said. Get this district going forward and have everybody working together, solving the problems. So, good report, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you very much, Karen.
Thank you.
Our next item on the agenda, 2014, 2015 Student Handbook Program Studies. Mr. Beishant.
That's me. The program of study and the discipline handbook, right? Are we waiting for the bullying policy to be placed in them?
Yeah, that's.
Did I miss, I must have missed.
Do we have that in place to put in?
No, we don't have it yet. The bullying policy is not, not even in the handbook yet.
Sure, I'll have Karen speak to it because this is an ongoing.
Just so I'm clear, the question is, is the bullying policy in the handbook yet?
Yes.
No, it's not because it was my understanding the last time that we met that we were going to wait to put that in the handbook because we had to add gender identity. And there are many other areas in terms of the coordinated program review that need to be embedded too. And we were going to embed all of that and then do one vote.
Okay, all righty, thank you. Yeah, I will schedule you for a future meeting to come forward with an update. Acceptable use of technology cellphone policy, Dr. Crowe?
Yes, I received an email from Mr. Torrey, who's the technology supervisor for the district, that the committee has been meeting. They are at the stage now where they are, they have a draft proposed for the BYOD as well as the policy, acceptable use policy itself. Those are being reviewed and finalized and then they'll send them to me for my review. And then we'll do one last draft and we'll send it on to committee.
Thank you. Any questions in regards to that by any, from any members? No? Okay, moving on, the new business personnel information. You have a listing in your packet of appointments and retirements. Any questions in regards to that? You also have the enrollment figures in your report. Any questions in regards to that? You have the school newsletter from the high school from Mr. Beishant. And Mr. Nodkis?
I did see there's a basketball game in East Brookfield with the faculty against the students, I believe, tomorrow night. I'll be there, I'd like to see this one. I'm sure it'll be, it'll be a good game for everybody, but we gotta support the kids, you know. And I'll be there whether it's called or not, thank you.
Thank you. Hearing for visitors, anyone wish to be heard? Seeing none. School committee comments, future agenda topics. I've had discussion with Glenn Kucha. And for the new members and any other members that would wish to attend, he is available to do a training on January 22nd, which is a Thursday. He's open to the time if you'd like to do something late afternoon, around 4 o'clock-ish and have pizza and break for supper, that type of thing. He figures we can get through it in about three hours. The superintendent wants to attend that as well. Any other members can attend as well. But I need to have a hand count tonight and some indication as to what time works, I don't know. It probably is for Mike and Angela, those are the two new people that have to have it. And then the rest of us will have to adjust on the whatever time. It would be the 22nd, January 22nd.
At 4?
I'm asking for a time, it's you and Mike, whatever's convenient that you can make it.
Can we push it to 5?
To 5, Mike?
Because I'm on vacation for the first two days and I don't think I'll be able to get it worked.
I can make whatever time, I can be there.
5 o'clock on the 22nd, that work for you?
Is that a Thursday, Mr. Chairman?
It's a Thursday, yeah. You'll be, it'll run probably 5 to 8, somewhere in that ballpark. So, other than Angela and Mike, who else would like to go?
I'd like to go.
Heather, so the three. Kurt, did you want to go?
Yeah, I'll go for a while because I got.
Okay.
Where will it be?
It will be held in the conference room at the superintendent's office.
Great.
Okay. So, that will be four along with the superintendent. And I'll notify Glenn tomorrow that that will meet the requirements for the two new members. Any, before I get to that, just an update on the purchase of the truck. Dr. Crowe has made many attempts to the state to get an update. We have not been able to get any information on the contract yet. I am assuming that we're just in line and waiting to weed our way through the process here. So, we'll report back to you as soon as we have something positive within the direction of that. The other item is, we received a request from MAS asking for the committee to make a donation to the legal fund that they are putting forth a fight for the 9C cuts, the transportation cuts that Deval Patrick's had put in. The chair would like to have a motion from the board to make some type of contribution as our part of trying to stop these cuts and aid us in our budget. Is there a motion to do that?
Chairman.
Mr. Nodkis.
I make a motion that we send $500 to MAS to fight the cuts.
A motion by Kurt for $500, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Clutier, any further discussion on it? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed or voted? Comments from future agenda topics from committee members, anybody have any? Mr. Clutier.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to know if we could get the auditors in here at either our next meeting, which would be preferable or the following meeting, one of our next couple of meetings. I'd like a presentation.
Okay.
Although we do have the preliminary report, I really want to get a presentation by though.
Okay, everybody has a preliminary report at this point. Dr. Crowe, we can arrange for that, to have the auditors come in, have Scanlon come in. We'll shoot for the next meeting, try to get it done. Anything else, sir?
That was all I had, thank you.
Anybody else have anything? We will start moving forward on the budget process. We do have the budget subcommittee that's comprised of Heather Messia, Mr. Clutier, and myself. And we are getting, we just got the dates today from the town administrator as to the deadlines we have to meet with the comptroller coming on board on Monday. I suspect that we're going to be starting that process very shortly. It's going to require some substantial meetings in the beginning. We'll do the preliminary work, then it's going to come back to the full board. And the superintendent will have the department heads come in at that point to come in and defend what's being brought forward for the budget process. So, we're looking at an early March time of having a final budget down, but a preliminary budget sometime in late February. So, it is going to require some attention, you know, in the next month and a half. Mr. Nodkis?
Mr. Chairman, is this going to be each school in the budget?
Yes, it will be.
Okay.
The principals from each school come in, sped will come in, everybody will be represented. Food service, we're going to do a couple a night, it may require, you know, three nights in a row, meeting-wise, to get them in. But we will have everybody in to defend their budget.
Thank you.
Anybody else? If not, a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion made by Heather, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Vinnie, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed or voted? Thank you.